Hello, everyone. We are about to start our Penfield Zoning Board work session. Some of the members are here at Town Hall with some staff members. Other members are appearing via Zoom, I believe it is. Right? It is Zoom. So we'll have work session, which probably will take about 10 or 15 minutes. We'll take a brief recess and then reconvene for the public hearings at 7:00. Okay, so let's get right into the work session. The first order of business is the approvals from the minutes from the May meeting. Everyone's had a chance to review them. Anybody have any additions, deletions? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Andres has moved to approve.
Second.
Maria seconded that. Any further discussion? Okay. Matt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Andres?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well, so unanimous approval of the minutes. Okay. We can now move to review tonight's applications, see if we have any questions for clarification. There are three applications tonight, and in no particular order. Let's take A, the 1415B Five Mile Line Road. Anybody have any questions to clarify that at all? Nope. Andres, I think you're lead on that.
I am, yep.
All set?
Yep.
Okay. The promotional events at Brant Point. Pretty clear, we had that one last year, I think, if I remember correctly. The third application for Don's Original has been withdrawn by the applicant. And the last application, 1750 Baird Road. Anybody have any questions or clarification on that one? No? Okay. Well, I think I lied when I'd say we'd be here 15 minutes in a work session. We don't have any tabled applications. So, any other business for the work session?
Nothing.
No?
All right. Thank you, folks. We will take a, you know, not so brief, I don't know, 20-
25 minutes.
25-minute recess and start the public hearings promptly at 7:00. God willing. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of Penfield Zoning Board Appeals. Due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, this meeting is being conducted remotely pursuant to the Governor's executive orders, including Executive Order 202.1, which suspended certain provisions of the open meetings law. This meeting is being video recorded and is being broadcast live on the Town of Penfield's website, www.penfield.org, and on the Town of Penfield's Government Access Channel 1303. The meeting will also later be transcribed. If you would like to address the Board on any public hearing matter, there will be specific public participation opportunities for each matter after the Board has had an opportunity to question the applicant after the applicant's presentation. You can participate by phone by calling 585-340-8771, or by electronic submission at Today's meeting will take place in two parts. The first, well, actually, no. No, we're not going to do two parts again tonight. Usually, we do, but not tonight. Tonight, we're going to have applications, and as soon as the applications are done, we'll ask, the Board members will have questions, and then we'll ask anybody that, any citizen that wants a comment on the application to do so. Once the public hearings are adjourned, we are going to go right into deliberations, application by application. We usually don't do it that way. We take a recess and we reconvene in the back of the room and handle all of them. But this time, we're going to do it one by one. It worked pretty well last month under these circumstances, and we're going to try that. I try to point out every month, and I believe my fellow Board members agree with me, we think the town does a really good job, even under these circumstances, of letting people in the community know that they have an opportunity to come in and speak about applications. The town does that by posting the agenda on their website, posting it here, by sending neighbors postcards if you live within a certain number of feet of an application, and by making the applicant put a sign out in the front where it's going to be visible to anybody driving by as well. So, we think it works well, and we welcome any comments. And with that introduction, I will ask everyone to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hopefully, everything's still working. And may we have the first application, please?
Anne Marie's-
Oh, Andy's going to introduce you.
Anne Marie Zamba, Crown Castle, USA, 3 Corporate Park Drive, Suite 101, Clifton Park, New York, 12065. On behalf of Vapor IO Incorporated, request area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow the installation of new equipment at an existing telecommunications
site on a parcel with less lot area than required by Section 250-13.11-B3 of the code, and with less setback from the property lines than required by Section 250-13.11-B6E of the code at 1415-B Five Mile Line Road. The property is owned by Don Byrd Belmont and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 094.18-1-7/TWR, application number 20Z-0010.
Wow. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Town of Penfield, Zoning Board of Appeals. I just wanted to thank you first for adapting so quickly to Zoom meetings in light of COVID. It helps to keep things moving and feel a bit more normal, so thank you. My name is Anne Marie Zamba. I am from Crown Castle. We are the telecom tower owner, and we are seeking and acting on behalf of Vapor this evening. We're seeking relief from area variances for the minimum 5 acre lot size requirement, as well as the 200-foot step-up requirement for telecom towers in residential districts. This is an existing telecom site. We believe it is the best place in which to put this data center for Vapor. There is no work that will be conducted to the actual tower. All work will be conducted on the ground. The compound is to be expanded roughly 760 square feet in order to accommodate Vapor's space and future build-out plans. We believe that no undesirable change will result from this in terms of the neighborhood. The tower and the compound are existing. There are very dense buffering trees which shield from local residents. This variance is not substantial. Similar variances were granted when the tower was originally approved back in 1997. There's no adverse impacts on the physical or environmental conditions. The area that this compound expansion is going into is already disturbed. I welcome additional questions that you may have regarding this application.
Thank you. Can you talk a little bit about, I guess, what is the purpose of this, and I guess, why here and not somewhere else that would maybe fit it that wouldn't require a variance?
Sure. So, we try, as an infrastructure company, to work within already disturbed tower sites. This is one of those. This tower has, the access easement provides for the power and telco necessary to effectuate this build-out, so this site was selected for that purpose. We don't want to put in new disturbances. Does that answer your question, or no?
Yes, yes, thank you. So, when you said less disturbances, does that mean no additional power from, like, in a sense, our gene doesn't have to run new lines out there, things like that? There'll be minimal disturbances around the area?
Correct. There will be minimal disturbances aside for the actual access road which travels up the property.
Okay. And there was a letter that was sent in. I'm not sure if you guys saw that message requesting some information about what the site will be in terms of, I think there were some questions about 5G. Did you see that, and could you comment on that letter?
Sure, absolutely. I did review that email provided by the local resident. There was a bit of confusion, I think, in the comments. I believe that the resident thought that we were putting up a new tower altogether. I just want to clarify for the public that that is not, in fact, happening. 5G at this point in time will not be on-site. Essentially, these data centers work so that the fiber that runs underground will connect this site with two others. The antennas that you think of, that you see on the tower up high, they propagate the 5G, so this is not really a 5G issue. I will also comment that the FCC regulates what emission standards can come out in terms of RF. They have been the same since 1996. They are constantly reviewed, the FDA, the World Health Organization, and it's an overall consensus that no adverse health effects actually arise from 5G.
Okay. Thank you. So, in terms of, you know, transmissions and things like that, this is not a radio wave site that's being installed. This is more ground transmission for cables and things like that? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. I think that's actually everything I have, then. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from other Board members? No? No for Matt? No for Mike? Marie?
No.
What is the size of the platform that's being built, the concrete?
Sure. I'm just going to reference my drawings here. So, the actual size, initially, it will be 16 by 5. We will seek an additional permit to come out and fill in the whole pad, which is roughly 16 by 20.
Okay. And is that the size that you're using to base your variance request on tonight, the 16 by 20, or the 16 by 5?
I'm basing it on the entire compound expansion.
Okay.
The 16 by 20.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, so I don't see anything from the public in terms of questions from citizens or, I'm looking at the meeting call-in, I don't see any there, and also via the website. Anybody else see anything? Okay, having heard nothing from anyone other than the applicant, and Board members, of course. Andres?
Yep. Let's start with Seeker. This is a type 2 action, not subject to further review under Seeker.
Okay, we have a motion by Andres to declare this a type 2 action under Seeker.
I'll second.
Mike Belljurno seconds. Any further conversation? Okay. Matt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Andres?
Aye.
Aye, am I as well.
Perfect.
Yeah, you like that. I'll say that three times fast than I might. We'll see if I get through it. Okay.
And then to move on to the application, I'm going to make a motion to, that we approve the area variance for this. I think the applicant brings up some good points in terms of, there's minimal disturbance that will occur from this. If we look at building a new site somewhere, that usually involves a lot more. It would involve our tower, involve many other pieces of infrastructure. The utilities are there already, so there's minimal disturbance. As a 16 by 20 pad, it's not that much larger. It's not going to actually encroach out any closer to the neighbor to the south at all because it's going to follow the same line that's already existing. There's a strong natural buffer area there, so in terms of a visual difference, you know, there won't be one seen from what we can tell. And really, minimal type aspects in regards to the letter that we received for comments. This is not a, you know, radio wave issue type thing. This is more of a data center with cables and things traveling underground for this, so I don't see any issues with that. And on those merits, I'll move to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Andres. A second from anyone?
I'll second that, too.
Mike Belljurno? Further comment or discussion? Okay, let's move to the vote. Matt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Andres?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
You're welcome.
Take care. All right, let's move to the second application, please. Andy?
Kevin Schumacher, American Promotional Events, 4003 Helton Drive, Florence, Alabama, 35630. Request a recommendation of approval for the issuance of an itinerant vendor license under Section 162-6-E1B and Section 162-E2 of the code to allow the sales of sparkling devices at 1990 Brant Point Drive. The property is owned by DeMarco Brant Point LLC and is zoned general business. SBL number 093.02-1-25.11, application number 20Z-0011.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
My name is Melissa Gudie. I'm with American Promotional Events. On behalf of Kevin Schumacher, who's the operator operating the location, American Promotional Events, we were, TNT Fireworks is our DVA. We were in this location last year, set up a tent for the same time period with the exact same operator. What we do is we set up, we work with Walmart, we're one of Walmart's partners, and setting up the tent as an accessory use to their sale. We set up a fundraiser, and Kevin Schumacher is a local teacher. I believe he appeared before the Board last year in person, obviously. Everything is the same setup in the same place as we had last year with the tent. We operate by the New York State, sorry about that, New York State Fire Code, and we also have our state permits with the State Fire. New York legal sparklers are what is sold, same thing there last year. Our setup inside of the tent is a little bit different this year due to, obviously, COVID and different precautions that we're taking to make sure that everyone is six feet apart. Typically, our operation, you would, if anyone has been in there before, you would go around the tent and shop around the perimeter. This year, it's more set up like a stand where if someone would come to a counter, the product would be behind the counter. So, that is, that, what you have right there is usually our traditional setup, which, if you're fine with it, we can do. We have moved recently to a little bit of a different setup, which allows for the, which does not allow for the customers to touch the product. So, it's more of, I can show you if I share my screen, but I'm not sure if that's allowed.
Sure.
Okay. I'll bear with me for a moment. Host disabled.
So, but basically, you're going to have customers, I'm sorry, Marie, but customers come up and say, "I would like one of those in that package over there," and then the, your clerk's going to hand them the package. Okay.
They have markings they're putting on the ground to make sure that everyone stays six feet apart. They have masks, they have sanitizer. We're following all of the CDC guidelines. That's pretty much it. Does anyone have any questions for me?
So, I just have a few questions. One is, what is your security like at night or when the place is closed?
So, Kevin Schumacher is the one operating the location, and what we require is that someone be there 24/7 watching the product, so he has somebody who is doing that.
Okay. And how about any kind of trash bins around the area, or music being played?
There shouldn't be any music unless, I mean, you don't mean he has music on his cellphone or something like that, but there's not like, it's not like an event where there's large speakers or anything like that. Trash, they have typically just like their food waste, really, so that they would have underneath it, and usually, and he is extremely, one of our best operators, and really clean, just put that in there and then dispose of it.
So, basically, go ahead.
Like cardboard and stuff is disposed of afterwards off-site.
Okay, so he's going to be responsible for making sure that the place, area stays clean, right?
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Okay. And then you spoke very well to being compliant with all the safety issues. Did you have any issues or concerns last year about noise or anything like that? Did the town receive any complaints?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking you and also Andy.
Yeah, I'm not aware that we received any complaints or any issues associated with it.
No one has told me if, I was managing the area last year, and Virginia is the individual who does our permit, so I don't believe that either one of us were made aware of anything because usually, I would contact the manager, who would be Kevin, and talk to him about whatever was happening.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask is because we received an email from a neighbor in the area saying that there were problems and disturbances in the Walmart area, but it doesn't say it was related specifically to this vendor. So, I just wondered if anything had ever been recorded.
I'm not aware of anything.
Okay. All right, great. And you spoke to social distancing, so I think I'm set with my questions. Thank you.
Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, would you address signage? What's the signage going to be like there?
Oh, whoops. Thanks.
We do have a signage, was there a signage plan submitted to you, sir? I don't know if you'd have that on your-
Yes. We do have it.
So, last year, we actually had some conditions. We limited the amount of signage, and we didn't use, we didn't approve the total package that was submitted.
Okay.
And I don't think there were any issues with that. Now, I know Kevin isn't on the call, but we would likely be doing something very similar to that.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks, Mike, for the reminder.
Any other questions from the Board? Okay. Once again, I see nothing on either the website, contact for citizen participation, or phone calls. So, having none of that, let's move to the seeker on this. Marie?
All right, so I move this as a type 2 action with no adverse impact and not requiring any further review.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion under Seeker by Marie to declare it a type 2 action, second by Andres. Matt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Andres?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now to the merits.
Great. So, I would make a motion to approve an itinerant vendor license for this applicant. As far as the criteria, you know, you've spoken well to keeping up with the safety precautions, including social distancing in COVID era, so I don't feel that there will be an increase or risk of danger. Last year, we didn't have any issues with traffic, and again, given that everything is in the same place, I don't see that being an issue this year, nor do I think there'll be any detrimental effect on the adjacent property. And you've, the vendor has said that you would be responsible for not creating any excessive noise and keeping, picking up the litter and things like that. So, the other thing with regard to signage is that last year, we had some conditions, and I would say that we would keep those conditions the same, and I have these here if we need to go over them, but we limited the amount of signs.
Just so, I want to make sure we're on the same page. I would, if you go over them, if you have a moment, that would be appreciated. I just want to make sure I relay the correct information back to him.
Sure. So, we limited the signage to the TNT bunting on the display tables.
Okay.
We did one TNT fireworks sign on each of the four sides of the tent, and then we did permit one directional sign at each roadway entrance to Baytown Plaza. I know that this is set back from the road, so we were okay with directional signs.
I just wanted to, can you repeat the part you put one sign at each, you said entrance?
One TNT fireworks sign on each of the four sides.
Mm-hmm.
And then, there is a directional sign-
Yep.
-for each entrance to Baytown Plaza.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay.
So, Marie, were you reading from the approval resolution last year?
Yes.
So, we can get you a copy of that so that you can see it as well. He probably has a copy.
Right.
So, but for sure, we can email it to you if you call tomorrow, and someone will have to work it out. I have full confidence in that.
But if you tell Kevin it's the same as last year in terms of signage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
All right, so we have a motion by Marie to approve with the, those conditions.
Second.
Second by Matt. Okay, any further discussion? Let's go to the voting. Matt?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Andres?
Aye.
Aye. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
May we have the third application, please, Andy?
Okay, this is actually the fourth application because the third one got-
I stand corrected. But in fact, it's the third application tonight.
You are correct, sir. Okay. Jason Gajuski, 1750 Baird Road, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a larger storage building than permitted under Section 250-5.1-F12A of the code, with less setback than required under Section 250-5.1-F12B of the code at 1750 Baird Road. The property is owned by Jason Gajuski and is zoned R-1-20, SBL number 109.04-1-36, application number 20Z-0013.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jason F. I am this evening. My proposal is to build a storage building that's about 0.4% larger than the maximum 1% lot size, so I'm looking for a 1,200 square foot storage building in the back of my property. The other item I'm asking for is to encroach upon the Woodland Environmental Protection Overlay District. I believe it's just the buffer area. And also place that building that's larger than 300 square feet, no less than 10 feet from the property line. In my application letter, I've noted that I don't believe there'd be a negative impact to the character of Baird Road. I lived here about 10 years. I've spent all that time on the do-it-yourselfer, approving the curb appeal and the value of the home. There are permanent woods, and again, protected wetlands behind the thing that would only be visible to the immediate neighbors, and I've put in some privacy trees as a part of the project to ensure that it's minimally visible. The benefit of this amount of additional storage really can't be accomplished by any other way than asking for some of these variances. I do have a small shed in the backyard now that would be removed upon completion of this other building. The proposed size of the building, you know, may be considered substantial by the square footage, however, looking at it as far as percent of lot size, it is not, I don't believe, as significant, looking at 1.4% of lot size instead of 1%. The land's already fairly level, no water issues. I have a sump pump in my basement that rarely runs, no standing water. The proposed site would be in maintained lawn area with good drainage, and of course, I would do anything with water drainage gutters now as requested by Penfield Engineering Department or environmental inspection. This is self-created because I want to be here, I want some additional storage. This unit would be used for, although I have a two-car garage in the- This unit would be used for, although I have a two-car garage in the front, it's a 1950s house, you can barely fit two cars in there if you have anything else in the garage. So I'd be moving my lawnmower and lawn equipment and tools and all that stuff into this building in order to be able to park both vehicles in my, in my front garage there. So again, appreciate the time and be happy to answer any, any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you. I guess my biggest concern and the questions that I have relate to just the sheer size of it. I know that you're saying it's only a 0.4% increase, but when we're only talking about 1% to begin with, that's, that's almost 50% more. How big is your house? How many square feet is your house?
I don't have that stat in front of me, but I believe it is about 800.
You cut out, you just cut out. Can you repeat that?
I'm sorry. I think it's about 1,800 square feet. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's somewhere around 1,800 square feet total.
So why does it need to be so big? Because the size of it really is, is also what's driving the need for the other variance, which is a 10, you're looking for only a 10-foot setback rather than a 50-foot setback, which I think that you even said in your, in your application, that size building wouldn't fit anywhere on the property and abide by the setbacks. So why does it need to be so big?
Like I said, I'm a big do-it-yourselfer. I just have a lot of, like I said, lawn equipment. I do a lot of, you know, woodworking projects and equipment that goes along with that. Just installed the pool this year, so all the pool deck furniture, there's no other storage, both on addition in the last couple of years, but no, no significant storage was added there. I gotta be getting rid of another small shed on my property that has equipment and things like that in it. The, the size of it is large. Again, it's, this is, I'm investing in this property as the, the long-term place I want to be. Everything I've done to the house so far, I constantly wish I did it a little bit bigger. So really, the, the size that I'm asking for is to ensure I have the options to go up to that size. Like I said, if I didn't have to ask for the variance, I think the max size I could do would be about 300 square feet, which is, I believe, about 16 by 17 or something like that. You know, not significantly bigger than the, than the shed that I have in the backyard as it is. So just looking again for storage room, room for projects, room to work on things, things like that.
Are there any other accessory buildings in your neighborhood that are of this size?
That I do not know unless I went south on Baird Road. You can't really see into people's backyards for more than maybe a 10-foot stretch. My property is the same way. If you're walking down the sidewalk on Baird Road, you'd be able to see this building maybe for about a 10, 15-foot stretch of sidewalk. Other than that, there's, you know, neighbor's house, trees, landscaping. So just offhand, I don't know, I guess, is the answer. I can't see, or I haven't done a lot of looking, let's say on Google Maps or anything like that.
Have you spoken to your neighbor, I guess it would be to the north, this would be only 10 feet from his property or her property line? Have you, have you spoken to that neighbor about your application, what you're planning on building?
No, I haven't, but I'd certainly be willing to, willing to do that. You know, we're friendly with all of our neighbors. I've spoken to a number of them, but specifically to the ones to the north, don't see them too often, but would be happy to speak to them if that was something that you guys wanted to ask.
What is on the other side of, on their property? So what, what would be on their property that's closest to this building?
There, if you see on the picture that's showing there, directly to the right of their two cars in the driveway there, they have a six-to-seven-foot privacy fence that surrounds their house. They put that in when they moved in. They have a couple dogs. So if you can see, it's tree color there, but there's a privacy fence that goes all the way around their property, and that would be what would back up to, to the red lines there, which is the mock-up of the building location.
I think that's all I have for right now.
Any other questions from board members?
Any exterior lighting on the building?
I don't plan on putting any exterior lighting. The, the building will have electrical, but just for lighting inside the building for working in the evening or in the winter when it gets dark or earlier. But no plans for exterior lighting, as, you know, I don't want to see that lit up in the back either.
What about colors and material? Is it going to be the same as the house?
Yep. Everything would be done to match the house, so same tan-colored siding, same white trim on any doors or windows. So every, everything may match the aesthetic of my, of my house.
What about the height at the highest point, the peak?
It'd be no higher than, no higher than 20 feet, I believe, is the, what's, what's allowed, so definitely no higher than that 20 feet. I'm not asking for any variance there.
Okay. That's all I have.
Marie?
So I was, I'm still really struggling with the size of the shed, and I'm curious if there's any way this could be a smaller building.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm asking for the size, because I, I would, I would like to, to do this size if a part of the conditions were, were to be slightly smaller. And obviously, I would, I would consider that and, you know, resubmit or reset some, some drawings, but this size is, again, what I'm, what I'm looking for, kind of mock-ups and little pieces of paper, the size of, you know, different tools or workbenches and all the deck and storage furniture, things like that. But, you know, I, again, I'd be flexible, that thing that was a big concern here.
What would be the next size you would consider?
I mean, obviously, I would like it as large as possible to, to have that, that storage space. So again, I would probably want to take that offline and submit, you know, think about it and submit something if, or again, look for recommendations from the board. Because I don't know if, you know, I'd go five feet or any better feet.
Sorry, you're going in and out again.
You're breaking up a bit.
Nope. Sorry about that. I think I just said I wanted to, you know, I'd want to take that offline and just, and look at my drawings and look for guidance from the board here if there was a size that you guys would find, you know, more acceptable.
And then there wouldn't be any commercial use for the shed, right? You're not running a business out of there?
Nope. No, ma'am. I am a director of operations for a payroll company based in Chicago, so it would be...
So you're out again.
Whoops.
Sorry, I'm going to turn my, I'm going to turn my video off here to see if that helps.
Yes.
No, I'm the, I'm the director, director of operations for a payroll company, so don't have any side business, would not be used for any commercial use whatsoever.
Thank you.
So a question that I have is, is this, is everything which will be stored in this building now on your property? And if so, where is it?
Yes.
So where is all, all that stuff now?
Yeah. So all my lawn equipment is in my front garage. I park both the cars. All the, the deck furniture is, is out now. There's a rather large trampoline that's in the backyard that would be stored in there during the winter. So yes, everything that's, would be stored in this building is on the property now. There's not something I have at a storage facility or anything like that.
Okay. So basically, if I'm hearing you correctly, presently, you don't really use your garage to park cars. You use it for storage.
Correct.
And you've mentioned workbenches, et cetera, a couple of times. Do you, do you have a hobby woodworking? Do you plan to use this building for that?
Yeah, it's not woodworking, but it's just stuff around. I'm a big do-it-yourselfer, so it's just storage for all my tools and equipment. You know, I pull it out, and right now, I do my, do my board cutting and stuff in the driveway.
Right.
This would be a, a place where it would be stored away, less loud, you know, around the neighbors and things like that.
Yeah. Well, Matt, this is, well, any other questions, Andres? It's, let me check to see if we have, any other questions from the board while I'm putting this password in? I guess what I'm thinking is maybe we table for the applicant to get some more ideas about a smaller shed and maybe doing something to reduce the variance and then also contacting his neighbor.
Yeah, I would say my biggest concern was that the fact the neighbor might not realize what's, what's in store for 10 feet from the property line as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that, those are all my thoughts and ideas, too.
How big is your current garage?
Can you say that one more time?
I'm sorry. How big is your current two-car garage? How many square feet?
Let's see if I can find that on the, try one moment, you might pull up my plans. It is about 23 by 23.
Okay. So everything in that garage fits in that space?
Sure.
See where I'm going?
Currently, everything, currently, currently, everything in my garage, obviously, fits in my garage, and that stuff would all be going, going back to this new building. But then there's, again, there's all the deck furniture, my pool covers, the trampoline stuff, the stuff that's in my other back shed building. So there's additional, additional stuff beyond the, my current garage that would be going into this, in this building. And again, room, you know, I, this isn't just room to just store stuff, it's room to set up sawhorses, to, you know, paint, to work on projects, whatever, whatever I need that space for.
Okay. Thank you.
Which currently, only again, if I'm doing that stuff, I'm doing it either in my driveway or removing stuff from the garage and making room temporarily there.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not showing anybody waiting to comment on either the, via the website or the call-in.
So the request is to speak to my neighbor to the north. I guess my one question for the board would be, would this require me to wait until the July meeting? I was looking to try to complete this project before the fall, or would it be something I could submit and converse with the board via email in between? Just, just want to know how you guys handle these things, first time here.
You'd, you would, we would not vote on this until the next meeting, so. But any information that you get, I look, like, often, not always, and it's not required, but often, what we see is an applicant will, will speak with neighbor, neighbors, particularly ones that are most affected by an application, make sure that the neighbor sees all the plans and knows where the location might be, just so that neighbor's fully informed. Sometimes there's a, again, not required, but sometimes there's a statement that the neighbor says, I've seen the plans, I've seen what's been submitted, and I'm okay with it. You know, that, that sort of thing. Go ahead, Matt.
Should we do seeker?
Pete, do we, if this is going to be tabled, Pete, do we do seeker typically before a table?
You could do it, or you can wait until you hear the application.
Decision's time for you, Matt, huh? You got a coin on you?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. Let's wait.
Okay.
Sorry, can I, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Thanks. So in looking for, kind of, to go, I guess the request is to go back, look at the drawings, see if, again, I can reduce the size a bit, is there any guidance there that you guys are looking for to go through? Or again, are you looking for, you know, all-new drawings? Or are you just looking for, hey, same exact everything except for the size is now this? Just looking for some guidance to, to know how much time and effort I should put into the material?
No, I, I think Marie was, when she asked you the size of your garage, you picked right up on that, and you said, yeah, everything that's in the garage would go here, but I have some other stuff as well. So sharpen your pencil, go see your neighbor, and, you know, we can't, we don't want to dictate to you, you, you need to ask for something you can live with, so.
Right. Understood.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. So I'll make a motion to table this.
A second.
All right. So we have a motion by Matt to table for, to give the applicant an opportunity to speak with his neighbor to the north and also reconsider the size of the, of the building and its location with an eye toward reducing the variance request. Okay. So, and we also have a second by Marie.
Now, if I, if I reduce the size, unless it's under, unless it gets down to 300 square feet or lower, I believe all of the variances would still be, like, I would still need exceptions to those variances, unless, again, I had my more exact measurement on the wetland buffer zone.
Right.
That might be the one that makes a difference, depending on the, let's say, the length of the building, but...
Yeah. I'd suggest you talk with Andy about that, because, yeah, you, we certainly don't want to come back in July and then all of us discover a problem that some communication prior to that could have prevented.
Sure. Okay. I appreciate it. Andy's been good to work with, so I'll talk to him soon here.
That's nice to hear.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, so...
Is that unusual?
Wow. Geez. All right. So let's go to the vote on the tabling motion. Mike? Oh, look at, Matt was ready to go. I, I turned things around a little bit on the, Matt?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Andres?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So we'll see you next month.
All right. Appreciate it, everybody. We'll see you in July.
Yeah. Have a good night. Okay. That was the last, oh, and again, nothing either way, so that was the last application for tonight. We voted on every one, right?
Mm-hmm.
In some manner, and I think we're good. Any other business? Okay, folks, another great job. Hats off again to everyone down in the basement on Penfield TV, and Christine and Andy, great job, fantastic fellow board members, way to go under these circumstances. You, too, Pete. I liked that answer you gave. Well, you could if you want, but you don't have to. Way to go. Way to be an attorney.
And thanks for facilitating.
All right. All right, everybody, have, well, have a nice fourth.
Bye, everybody.
And stay healthy. We'll see you next month. Take care. Bye-bye now.